Hi, I'm Kalila Harris. I am the Connection Chairman for SciFi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And in that role, I oversee our community connection and social action work. I am joined here by Delegate Nick Mosby. This is the sixth in a series of interviews with candidates for City Council President based on data collected as part of the Blueprint for Baltimore Survey. OSI Baltimore and Community Partners Baltimore Votes, Black Girls Vote, Baltimore Leaders Organizing Change, CASA, and the No Boundaries Coalition conducted the canvassing survey in the fall, asking more than 5,000 Baltimore residents to identify their priorities for city leadership, making this the largest issue-oriented survey in Baltimore's history. You can see the survey results at OSI Baltimore.org/Blueprint. OSI co-sponsors, again, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated's SciFi Omega Chapter and the Junior League of Baltimore, along with media sponsors WYPR and the Real News Network, planned to host a forum a week and a half ago to pose these questions to City Council President candidates. But because of the COVID-19 pandemic, the forum was canceled. Instead, we'll use these interviews to conduct question and answer with each of the candidates individually and using questions prepared for the forum. Lisa Snow McCray of the Real News Network, WYPR's Tom Hall, and I were scheduled to moderate the forum. Unfortunately, Tom and Lisa are not available to participate in this interview, so we'll ask their questions for them. So again, welcome Delegate Nick Mosby.
Thank you for having me today.
My pleasure. So we're going to ask you questions related to six areas covered in the Blueprint survey: Education and Youth Support, Public Safety and Policing, Housing, Economic and Community Development, Health and Civic Participation. We'll ask you to please limit your responses to around 90 seconds. Before we start on the questions, can you let us know how you're dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic? And any reflections on the city's response?
Well, you know, we just got out of session. As the Chair of the Election Law Subcommittee, it was important for us to pass emergency legislation, knowing that the upcoming primary election was really important to the state of Maryland. But we wanted to address it the right way. So was excited to pass a bill to ensure that we develop emergency funding for all mail-in ballot. If that's where we go, that's where the governor ultimately decides for us to go. As well as we passed emergency funding and extended the deadline for open enrollment. As a delegate, I've been working, you know, I've reached out to state and national folks about the lack of transparency with data associated with COVID-19 cases, as well as deaths. You know, right now, we're getting a lot of reports about age, about gender, about location, but nothing around race. As you know, you know, health disparities have always been, particularly in poor communities of color. And when we see pockets of populations in New York, in Chicago, now in New Orleans, and in Baltimore in a week or two, it's really important that we kind of get ahead of those numbers and those statistics. So that's what I've been working on. But just really trying to push the word out to constituents about the virus, about things to do, and about resources. As it relates to the city, I hope that, you know, in a quick order, we'll be able to develop ways of setting up sites around the city for folks to actually go and get tested. We know, once we start to approach that apex, you will no longer be able to go and say, like, an emergency room. And many folks in our communities, particularly in my district, do not necessarily have health insurance or primary physician to kind of get those pre-screens, to get appointments to go in from a COVID perspective. So really need to develop a real robust way around that. I know that the Health Department has been working around the clock with the Planning Department and with the Mayor's Office, and I look forward to participating and supporting them.
Great, thank you. So in my regular nine-to-five, I am Managing Director for K-12 Education Policy with the Center for American Progress. So let's kick this off with first questions about education and youth support. City officials often state that they don't, they don't have a role in public education because they don't control Baltimore City Public Schools. Answering only yes or no, do you believe the City Council should confirm all City Council, excuse me, all members of the Board of School Commissioners?
Yes.
Great. Do you want to have any follow-up on that?
I would love to. Yeah, I'm definitely in supportive of it coming through the Executive Boards Committee of the Baltimore City Council. But I'm also supportive of a partially-elected school board, allowing the citizens to actually have representation on the actual school board. So I would look for a mixed bag, not only the appointees to come through the City Council and have City Council approval. That way, we ensure that we have subject matter expertise on the school board, but then also have the community's involvement by having a partially-elected school board. We're one of the only jurisdictions in the entire state of Maryland that currently does not.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So the Blueprint also overwhelmingly supports increased investment in our city's young people. Again, answering only yes or no, do you support the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund remaining outside of city government to preserve the vision of community members from across the city who worked to set it up?
I would, yes. Can I expound on that?
Yes, you can.
I would say yes for now. I mean, that's the way it was deployed. I mean, it's only had one cycle to run through. You know, as, as City Council President, you know, I do definitely understand the benefits of having the autonomy inside of city government to ensure that the money's being directed to the organizations and individuals that it was intended for. I was on the City Council when we passed this legislation. And the point was to provide grassroots organizations, the folks with boots on the ground that was really connected to the systemic issues that plagued our communities for far too long, but didn't necessarily have the connections, the branding, the technical support, to go after the larger foundation, to provide them with a pool of money so that they can blossom and flourish. And it would provide us, again, with the opportunity, looking at from an evidence, database perspective, to do the comparison of some of the organizations that have been around for so long. So I see pros and cons of both. So right now, I would say, I wouldn't want to try to reinvent the wheel right away. So if it was immediate term, if I'm fortunate enough to become a City Council President, I think the goal would be to keep it the way it's been set up and see if there's a way to perfect it. But I'm definitely open to bringing it back into city government and having city government with that autonomy. Particularly, we talk about with our school system, we talk about recs in parks, we talk about the synergies that city already has with interfacing with young folks. It'll ensure that the core competencies of the city, as it relates to trying to provide the best trajectories for our young folks, is intact if we brought it inside, and that way, we could control it.
So just to clarify, your position, your answer is no. It should not stay outside of city government.
It's tough. What I would say is, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected, no, I'm not moving it out the first year that I'm City Council President. Will I take a team and evaluate synergies or possibilities for the future? Definitely yes. But yes, when, when I'm elected as City Council President, if I'm fortunate enough, no, I'm not going to move it outside of the current construct that it's currently in. I think we need to get the funds to those organizations. We've seen a lot of great work. And to just throw a rink in that and slow down and hurt the process again, I don't think it makes sense right away.
Gotcha. So what two policies would you set for, for City Council to really impact educational outcomes for our students?
Um, I would grab a couple, I would grab two. But if I, if I only had to pick two, I would say, I'm really focused on student-teacher ratio, particularly on our low-performing schools, particularly in elementary and then middle schools. I think that's really, really been a bad problem. Look, I'm born and raised in the city of Baltimore, proud of Baltimore Public Schools. I was trapped in that classroom with 36, 37 kids before, in middle school, with a completely unproductive environment for learning. So I know that there's major challenges that we have there. And I think as a city, we have to, like, put our foot down and say, we cannot have this. This is a bare minimum of where we're going to go. Unfortunately, the state has not had the, uh, the strength to do it on a state level and do it statewide. But I think it's really important for a place like Baltimore City to kind of do that. Another thing I would go after is ensuring that we develop all the funds that we can to get as many kids to read by the age, by the third grade. We know the statistics there, we know the evidence base there, that if you have a kid that's reading by the third grade, the likelihood that they're going to be able to go on and ultimately graduate from high school significantly increases. If I could just throw in a couple other things, you know, we know it's a pipeline of young folks that are coming through our city, through our elementary, through our middle schools, that wind up in the criminal justice system, that wind up in the Department of Juvenile Services. So ensuring that we put the right gears around them and the right institutions around there and go after those pipelines, as well as, it's the same pipeline as the dropout pipeline in the city schools. And the last thing I would say is, ensuring that we have more CTE opportunities for our young folks. You know, as we continue to grow our economy, technical trades will be important for our young folks as it relates to becoming entrepreneurs, whether it's in plumbing, electrical, carpentry. All these things will be around forever, no matter how, how technology kind of grows and our economy grows. And I think we need to provide our young folks with those types of hands-on tools to succeed in 21st century.
So a lot of the Kerwin Commission's passage, which you were very involved in, and in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, which has potential to really strip the state of not only its balanced budget, but also the Reserve Fund of the state, and in light of during the essential 2008, the Thornton Commission not being able to increase dollars at the rate that it was set out, would you pull money out of the Police Department to make sure that Kerwin recommendations are funded?
When we look at the city's budget over the past 30, 40 years, you know, public safety has significantly outpaced inflation, while the money that we directly spend for our young folks have underperformed inflation. So I think definitely there's a sweet spot that we have to reset our focus. I mean, we could continue to kind of chase after those short-term solutions, or we can develop a comprehensive long-term plan that really goes after the systemic issues that plague our, that plague our city. And I think that that's focusing on our children and fostering better learning environments, better growing environments, better opportunities for our young folks. So definitely, yes.
Great. And so let's shift a little bit to talk more about public safety. And these questions were prepared by Tom Hall. Thirty-two percent of respondents to the survey support expanding safe streets. The city has other violence interrupting programs like ROKA. ROKA is now largely funded by philanthropy, as are several other organizations like Hope, helping oppressed people excel. Does the City Council President have a role in coordinating the efforts of the different groups?
I think wholeheartedly. When I was on the City Council, I brought Safe Streets back to West Baltimore with the Mondom in addition. I'll never forget standing in front of Douglas High School with the community that day when we actually won the award from the Health Department. I think that these organizations and sustainability and growth of these organizations are pivotal to the reduction of crime in our communities. I mean, one, it provides jobs and opportunities for men and women who may not, who need a second chance or have had some past criminal transgressions. But also, it provides them to connect to the streets and the communities in which they affected in some way. And I think that when you look at it from an evidence-based perspective, it works. It works doing it the right way. So the expansion of these type of harm reduction programs, and that's outside of the public safety budget, I think is critical. And as, if I'm fortunate enough, as the next City Council President, that's something I look to expand.
Excuse me. Thank you.
No safety distancing.
So the City Council President is the chief legislative official in the city. What legislation can you suggest or imagine that would effectively address violence reduction?
So I think, I think, the way you phrase that question, I think, is exactly right. You know, I've worked on the City Council for five years and had a tremendous amount of success from a legislative perspective, as well as an Annapolis for the past four years. And I think that's why I'm, like, uniquely positioned to be the next president of the City Council. I think as it relates to the Police Department and going after public safety, again, we have to walk and chew bubble gum at the same time. So when we talk about sustainably and a comprehensive reduction of crime, it's really going after the roots of why crimes take place. I think our city has done a horrible job as it relates to the concentration pockets of poverty and ensuring that we have the right resources and needs in those areas. I think we've done a horrible job as it relates to going after mental health and addiction abuse in our city. So those types of things are the long-term plans that really help sustain the reduction of crime. From a short-term perspective, I think that we can spend our money wisely by really cracking out and focusing on the violent repeat offenders. I mean, no matter if you put me on the worst corner, the worst block, the worst community statistically in the city of Baltimore, the overwhelming majority of folks are productive citizens who live in those communities that are trapped by little, literally domestic terrorists and these violent repeat offenders that are in their communities. So as opposed to doing, like, the sweeping approach, and as opposed to doing, like, stop and frisking and doing, like, these broad-level approaches, is really developing smart and intelligent ways of targeting on the folks that are creating the violence in our communities and providing opportunities for the young folks around them.
Thanks much. With that said, let's pivot to economic and community development. Would you support a universal basic income for at least the 35% of residents with the lowest incomes or living at 150% of the regional poverty level?
Now, I support universal base income, uh, structure. As it relates to the 35% or 150%, you know, I would have to look at the numbers and see where we are. You know, after we come out of this COVID thing, we have no idea what it's going to do, particularly as it relates to city revenue. So how the concept, I totally agree with. It would be hard for me to commit to numbers without really understanding what the impact is going to be coming out of this global pandemic to our city and our budget, but then also, more importantly, how the numbers look when we break out and shake those things out.
Great, thank you. That's fair. How would you expand the footprint of investment into communities that have been historically blocked from opportunity, ensuring that the legacy residents are not displaced or excluded from new amenities or increasing property values?
So the one interesting thing that we have in Baltimore that's really unique, particularly in cities like Baltimore that have gone through these periods of decline through deindustrialization, is we have Homestead Tax Credit. You know, basically, every three years, you know, you get a new assessment on your home, and that will ultimately drive your taxes, and your property value might go up, but your taxes you pay will only go up by, you know, 4%. So I think that that provides us in a very unique position than what we saw seeing, like, Brooklyn, or like, what we saw in Washington DC. And I think that we have to do a better job of communicating that, not only to our residents, but also to folks who are interested in coming to the city. So I think that that's one huge carrot that we have right there. I think ultimately, what we just have to do a better job of is showing opportunities in our community to provide for development, and that has to be intentional. Like, it's not just going to happen. If you are a developer and you know that you are going to try to get between 12% to 17% return on your investment, and you have an opportunity to do it around the harbor versus an opportunity to do it in the middle of West Baltimore, you're going to take your risk and move it down to around the harbor. So you have to develop intentional programs to bring development outside of communities. I bought my house, it was abandoned for almost 20 years, in West Baltimore. It didn't have a roof, I could stand on the basement floor and see the sky, because I believed in the community, I believed in the area. But you take communities like this in Reservoir Hill, that are transforming communities, and it's been transforming for way too long. But you take communities like this, and you really interject public-private attention to it, like, these develop, these programs that I'm referring to, you'll see communities like this turn over a lot faster. And, you know, that's what I'm really interested in as the next City Council President, if I'm fortunate enough.
Thank you. Let's continue on this conversation related to housing. These questions were prepared by Lisa Snow McCray. In 2016, Baltimore residents voted to create $20 million affordable housing trust fund, funded partially by revenues from taxes on real estate transactions. Citywide Blueprint participants thought that money going to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund should be used by rebuilding vacant buildings for affordable housing. What do you think about that, and where do you think the money should go?
So it definitely needs to go to affordable housing. Our affordable housing program in the city has been underperforming forever. I'm not sure when's the last time we actually was able to leverage it to actually see a quality affordable housing product done in the city of Baltimore. To say that it should be tied directly to only redevelopment of existing buildings, again, that's something that I'm not willing to say, like, definitely yes. I think that that is in the play. Sometimes it's going to have to be greenfield, sometimes it'll have to be brownfield, sometimes it'll have to be redevelopment of an existing building. But it should definitely be tied towards affordable housing. I mean, you look at some buildings, unfortunately, through demolition, demolition by neglect, they've been sitting for, like, my house, let's say, for 20 years. I mean, you sit a building for 20, 30, 40 years, it's, sometimes it's cheaper just to tear it down and rebuild new. Other times, it makes sense to just go in and gut out and build. Other times, it makes sense to utilize existing things and features that's inside of the building. So it will have to be a mix and match as it relates. But I think what I would be willing to say is, all of that money should be tied to real affordable housing, and not in a concentrated area, but all throughout the city of Baltimore.
Great, thank you. As we go through the current COVID-19 crisis, we're seeing how important it is to take care of people experiencing homelessness. They are the most vulnerable to getting the virus and could spread it. How do you plan to address the needs of people who are experiencing homelessness as City Council President?
So the one thing I learned, like, during the unrest, is it's all about being prepared. And if you don't have the relationships and the skillset and subject matter expertise in the areas of, of the folks you're trying to communicate with, it's really hard to effectively drive the right resolution during the midst of a crisis. And I say that to say, not that the city's not prepared, but I say that that's really, really important. So the first thing I would say is, ensuring from an essential employee perspective that the folks who have the skillset and subject matter expertise of dealing with the homeless population are on board and have the tools and the skillset to reach out to them. Next thing I would probably do is try to partner with organizations, be it college campus from a dormitory perspective, or be it hotels, be it somewhere where we could have a safe and secure location to ensure that they're at least isolated away from the elements. Now, all that in itself is a really tough and difficult plan because they're still in close proximity to one another. You don't know how they congregate in the, the, the common areas. So it's still really difficult to do. However, I think removing them away from being on the street, providing shelter, and providing them in a closed-door environment where at least there's some level of interaction with them is critically important. But again, you're going to need folks that specialize in, in mental health, folks that specialize in substance abuse, folks that are regularly skilled in dealing with this very unique population that has been ignored for far too long.
So let's pivot a little bit along the same vein to health. And these questions were also prepared by Lisa Snow McCray. Respondents to the Blueprint survey said that if more money were allocated to mental health, trauma, and substance abuse services, oftentimes, some of the factors contributing to homelessness, the government should make treatment for these things more affordable. As City Council President, how would you advocate for that?
So the city of Baltimore has a tremendous amount of private institutions, nonprofit institutions, that are world leaders and experts in many of these spaces. I think that we have to do a better job. I mean, and this goes far beyond just substance abuse and mental health, but this is like every aspect of running the city. We have to do a better job of, like, having that round table and bringing in real partners with real commitments to help, you know, put Baltimore on a different trajectory. You know, I constantly talk about developing a comprehensive plan, be it a 15, 20, 25-year plan, not a plan that's going to get me to my next election, but a plan that we can incrementally look at to see if we have key performance indicators, see if we have objectives, see if we're meeting goals and targets, be it homelessness, be it education, be it development in our communities, but a plan that we can kind of look at. And that plan is wrapped around these subject matter experts, be it Johns Hopkins or University of Maryland Medical Systems, or the other folks that are out there doing great work in our community in the private sector. But I think that that's where the city needs to lean on, those individuals and those institutions that are rewarded a great deal for even being in the city of Baltimore. But they kind of have to come to the table and be helpful with us there.
So what types of things would you advocate for those partners to contribute to make sure this care is affordable?
Like, serious levels of billable hours through their doctors and through their subject matter expertise to deal with the folks that we get to refer them to. Specific programs, where they can develop programs inside of our school system. I mean, imagine if, say, University of Maryland Social Work, who already has certain programs in West Baltimore, expands it out throughout the city and really helps and goes in, and is a direct partner with, say, our community schools. Or say, Johns Hopkins, as it relates to mental health and behavioral health treatment in our schools or in our, in our different sectors. So I think that it's those types of things that, like, really developing initiatives and programs, putting that in that plan, and then having those incremental objectives, key performance indexes that we can look back on to show the progression. I think a lot of times, we want to say, like, what our plan is, and our plan is literally for the next year, for the next two years. A one- or two-year plan is not going to help the city of Baltimore, nor doing multiple plans over the next one or two years. What we need is a comprehensive plan that we can all say we agree with, and we can all put our forces behind. And again, if I'm lucky enough as City Council President, that's exactly what I would love to do.
All right, thanks so much. We're gonna, let's see. Let's pivot now to our final category of questions, which is civic participation. Eighty percent of white voters said that they've been involved in the budget process, 60% of African-Americans, 40% of Latinos. How would you increase engagement in the political process among people of color who've long been marginalized by Baltimore's power structures?
So I'm glad you ended the question with the marginalization by Baltimore's power structures, because I think that that's really the root of it. You know, I find it interesting, a lot of times, we ask that question just on the front end, and we talk about voter participation, or we talk about people being engaged at City Hall, but there's a history behind all of that, that has constructed this type of environment and the separation, or that chasm between the two. I think that one of the first things is just delivering on the promises that you give. And when you go to the worst communities in the city of Baltimore, at the end of the day, the average citizen just wants to know that they have representatives that they can trust, that actually care about them, and are rolling up their sleeves and working to provide them with a better outcome. And I think unfortunately, our citizens, not just through their own experiences, but the experiences of their parents and their grandparents, have seen this cycle of City Hall, Annapolis, the White House, not really connecting to their issues and trying to develop and outline and solve their problems. So I think that that's literally the first step, like, really being present, being active, being engaged, but then also being committed to the word in which you provide to them and developing that level of transparency. I think from there, as you continue to grow there, you're going to see less apathy in the whole political process and the whole engagement with government. And you'll see folks naturally participate. I mean, black folks or Latino folks are not participating in government because they choose not to. They just never really felt like they necessarily had a seat at the table. And institutionally, just because we've had, say, black politicians or politicians of color, that doesn't mean that that still isn't that institutional chasm between the, the body of government and their daily lives. And I think that you need someone that can kind of break that down. Being born and raised in the city of Baltimore, proud of Baltimore Public City Schools, again, you know, I've seen the best, I've seen the worst in the city. I grew up in northeast Baltimore, in a three-bedroom house with six women. First person in my family to go to college. So I think that, I talk to people all the time, you could put me in a boardroom downtown because of my education and my professional career as an electrical engineer, or you could put me on any street corner, and I'll be able to relate with the population, I'll be able to look at a problem, and I'll be able to solve it. And I think those types of committed and passionate leaders is what the city of Baltimore needs now more than ever. And that's what I plan to do if I'm fortunate enough to become the next City Council President.
All right. So the Board of Estimates has five members, and we know there's currently a charter amendment to reduce that number to three. What are your thoughts on that? Would you support the charter amendment?
I think it's critical to have two members on the board that are really an appointee of the mayor and really his de facto proxy votes, his or hers proxy votes. It's just kind of, again, it's not a transparent way of running the government. We have three citywide elected officials that serve in that capacity. I think it should be those three. It's an odd number that will allow us for real transparency and understanding of what the Board of Estimates is doing.
And the last question, you've talked about the role of City Council and what it could do to support an effective government for a strong Baltimore city. What exactly would you be doing if you're elected City Council, City Council President to enact the things that you've discussed and to bring people to the table?
Well, again, I think our city is desperate, in desperate need of just, like, real leadership and folks that are going to be able to connect with all of the city, right? So I think what I really would like to do is, one, develop that network of folks that's planning on working with City Hall in all different sectors. And when I say folks, I mean folks from our communities to corporate CEOs. I think that that's the type of round table that we need in our city. And from there, developing that comprehensive plan, that 15, 20-year plan, developing, again, those key performance indexes, the objectives, the timetables in which we're going to reconvene back. You know, what do we deem as success, what do we deem as progress? I think it's that plan is which we can kind of take and we can always look back to, to see if we're incrementally moving in the wrong direction. I mean, when you're dealing with as many problems that we have in the city of Baltimore, and as diverse as they are, and as deep as they are, some of these problems have been around for 40 or 50 years. You know, it's really hard to determine if we're moving in the right direction. the right direction if we don't have a plan to consistently look back to and we're not looking at real numbers. You know, as an electrical engineer, I'm really analytical, and I think that we have to get back to a performance-based type of system where we have numbers, where we see that progress. And I plan on trying to set up that table, I plan on helping to try to develop that plan, and I think that that's what we need. So in 10, 15, 20, 25 years, we can look back and see the city that we all know Baltimore can be.
Well, thank you Delegate Mosby. That last set of questions was presented by Tom Hall. I want to thank WYPR and the Real News Network and other media partners, as well as the partners who supported the development and the canvassing for the Baltimore Blueprint Survey, as well as our partners for these events, Junior League of Baltimore and sci-fi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, most importantly, OSI Baltimore for standing up this series. You have any final comments you want to share with the public?
Every time you say sci-fi, I just keep thinking about Omega sci-fi. Keep missing.
I'm sure, I'm sure those are your thoughts.
No, this is great. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Great, thanks so much. This is the last in our series, I believe. Hopefully, the public will be able to benefit from these sessions and hearing directly from all of the candidates. Thank you and please be safe.